Change during. Well, I can't. What changes do you want or would not have as I haven't seen it? But my understanding is there are things under for them to be appealed and we like to.
Thank you, Madam Interim Chairman. With regard to this matter, we are unable to retort that. Applicants have statutory requirements. There is a issue been flagged with respect to the application of mailing. What we would be requesting is that regrettably, an additional or further two weeks' continuance to October thirteenth, public hearing kept open, so that we are able to confirm information that needs to be reported on the affidavit of mailing and how the applicant make those corrections and then file them to the commission.
I, I excuse me. I think. First, it might be more difficult if I allow Mr. Zibakalam to accept the commission's request after the bit of mailing, but I think he has more information than I do about the circumstances of the application.
Hello, Chair members of the Commission. This is Emmanuel Zibakalam. I did receive a phone call from investigator Cruz yesterday at about 1:00 P. M. I'm sorry? Are you able to hear me?
There's no sound.
How about now?
Then I can provide some information. So my understanding from Mr. Zibakalam is that the affidavit of mail does contain the number of, I think, if the owner will be.
Yeah, how about now?
In the prescribed area. I'll tell you the total amount of mailings for each of those categories that we found. The only information that's missing is the calculation of the percentage. I believe there's also some disagreement with the investigators with respect to duplicates encountered. So they do dispute the one hundred percent calculation for the mail. I just would like to point out a couple of things.
Hello?
Is that there's nothing.
Hello?
Nothing actually with all of that. It requires the applicant to calculate for the commission the percentage of the mailings that we've got. It merely requires a two-thirds or three-fourths. Whatever category is being requested in the statute that the mail is actually done. Those numbers have been provided to the commission. And so math, I believe, is the only thing opening up the public hearing today. My belief is that, you know, requiring the percentages to be provided when it's calculated by the numbers provided is simply form over substance at this point. And especially with respect to this application, I would just like to note for the commission that this application was turned in in the beginning of July of 2021. There was no communication with the assigned investigator until the end of November of 2021. After that date, I followed up again at the end of January 2022. It was reassigned that same month in January 2022, and I heard nothing until the end of February of 2022. We were then set for a preliminary hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. On April twelfth, two days prior to the hearing, was the first time I received the investigative report, which again, for the first time, raised various issues with the application. That preliminary hearing was successfully passed. We were scheduled for a public hearing on June ninth, twenty twenty-two. On June ninth, at eleven A. M., I received a supplemental report flagging issues with the mailout. That public hearing was continued to June thirtieth. I then emailed to confirm receipt of the required information on June seventeenth. And then on June thirty, I'm sorry, June twenty-eighth, a second supplemental report was received. And then another supplemental report was received on June thirtieth, the day of the hearing, at one forty-four P. M. The hearing was again continued for mailout issues to July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at which date we agreed to do an entirely new mailing. The public hearing was canceled and was rescheduled for September eighth, twenty twenty-two. I did not receive the required notice to do the mailout until July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, which is three days beyond the mailout deadline of July twenty-fifth, which is why we are here today to continue this again for another two weeks when this applicant has done everything the commission has asked, has done the mailout now twice, has received four supplemental reports, all within, you know, less than a day before the public hearing. This is now the fourth scheduled public hearing for this application. And I believe it does fall beyond the time limits prescribed in HRS ninety-one thirteen point five, which provides the maximum time for this public hearing period, I believe, at ninety days. The first public hearing was scheduled in June. We are now almost there. I mean, we're in October already. And I just think that a further delay at this point is unwarranted. Holding it up because of a simple math calculation that's missing on a paper that can be done in a matter of seconds is unreasonable, and it's been just asking too much of the applicant.
Thank you for that representation.
I apologize.
And I do, I was here for the entire time. I think I made a couple of these hearings, but I, I do know that this has been on our agenda many times over the course of a year or more. Mr. Zibakalam, can, is your audio working now?
Can you hear me? Are you able to hear me?
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize for that. I can only report on the factual basis that was presented to me by the investigator. I believe I received the phone call yesterday at one P. M. There was a discrepancy in which the total number of mailouts was provided. The total, I'm sorry, the total number that was mailed out for registered voters was provided on the affidavit, as well as the total number that's required on the first page detailing how many there are. They were the same number, so it would equal a hundred percent, but that one hundred percent wasn't placed in, in the second box due to a clerical error. So a- after requesting the information to try and fix it, the affidavit, we did provide six more, I believe, five affidavits to the commission along with a wet copy this morning at eleven A. M. After which, I received a call from the investigator in which he said that after reviewing the registered voter mailout, we did meet the statutory requirements for the mailout, but he believes that there were some duplicates that were put together as well as a few unit numbers that, that may have not been included in, in the, I guess, field of the report that was given. However, he did state that the statutory requirements were met for the registered mailout, and that is the extended knowledge I have regarding this. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to review the documents as I haven't been provided a supplemental report, so we haven't been able to check whether or not we, you know, those spaces were duplicates or if perhaps they changed it. I'd be unable to say at this time.
Ms. Aray, have we received any letters and protests for this application?
This applicant has received zero written protests, zero letters of support.
Thank you. Mr. Sato, do you have any comments on this? Okay.
You're thinking if I could just state for the record that a summary of the April fourteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to interim chairman prior to the public hearing.
Yes, I did receive that.
That was your one absence.
Yes. Is your client ready to open?
My client has been ready to open and operate since the first public hearing back in June. Back in June of this year or the previous?
Of this year. Commissioners, I think we need an executive session to discuss this. Can we get a motion, please?
Motion for the commission to go into an executive session to consult with the board's attorneys on questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, duties and liabilities to consider. Subsequent?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for these purposes.
Yep.
Second.
Remove the second into convenience for executive session. I also vote I on executive session. Back on the record, thank you for giving us that time to speak with legal counsel. So Ms. Opciana, Mr. Zibakalam, Ms. Lim. Sympathize with the time, the amount of time that this has taken. And I appreciate you folks. I, I see that you folks have worked really hard at this. Unfortunately, this, because this requirement stems from a statute, we are not allowed to leave it. I've been told by investigator Sato that there is forty-four individuals, which they have their names and mailing addresses they can provide to you. And then, and that will meet the requirement. I would like to also state that the commission will be looking at amending this statute in this upcoming legislative session to have it aligned with common sense. Because we understand that you folks, as well as any other applicants, has had difficulty meeting this requirement despite your best efforts. With that, commissioners, can I get a motion for a two-week continuance of the hearing kept open? Then move that second to continue. Agenda item number one, application number two-two-dash-two-three-four-six-four for two weeks with the public hearing kept open. I also vote I. Motion is carried. Application is approved. I mean, I'm sorry, continue.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask for the continuance in two weeks, if it could be placed further behind in the agenda. I will be in trial that day, so I won't be able to make it for a four o'clock start time. And, you know, I've made promises to my client that I would be here for her, and I don't want her to be here by herself.
Yes, of course, we can accommodate that.
Thank you.
We will call it as it's agenda and then just take it up later.
Yes, whenever you arrive, we will take it up.
And if I could just have a clarification as to specifically the statutory requirement that is currently lacking that we need to make sure is in place for the two-week continuance?
Investigator Sato and investigator Cruz, like I said, have identified forty-four individuals that did not receive mailing that need to receive mailing as required by statute. And they are ready to provide those names and addresses to you folks to help with that process.
And is it the representation of the investigators that those forty-four individuals make the difference as to whether or not the applicant has met the two-thirds or the three-fourths requirement?
I will let them answer that. Mr. Sato.
I'm investigator Daniel Sato. In order to meet the statutory requirements, one hundred percent of every owner unless see within five hundred feet from the proposed premises shall be listed. Also, all the registered voters within five hundred feet of the proposed premises, their names on the master list. Is the statutory required.
In other words, he's saying that the master list is deficient. I'm sorry for, like, conjecting.
No, please, Ms. Aray, add it whenever you need to.
Okay, so it's, the issue is not with the affidavit of mail. Is that correct?
Without going into any more further details without a written report, it is our preliminary understanding as of this one that the affidavit of mailing is wrong because you're missing forty-four. Then we will work with Ms. Opciana. Investigator Cruz is outside. He was the investigator responsible to tally up and confirm those.
Thank you. Please work with them because I believe at this point the delays are pretty unreasonable. So we're continuing this for two weeks. Public hearing is still open. Thank you. Thank you. Calling agenda item number two, application number two-two-dash-two-four-one-nine-seven from eight-eight-eight Phoenix eight. Nice to see you, folks.
Good afternoon, Chair. Members of the commission, Greg Nishio appearing on behalf of the applicant. To my right is Raymond Zhang, representing the applicant. I gave his spelling of his name to the here's reporter previously. We have received investigator Walker's supplemental report of no changes, additions or corrections.
Thank you. Ms. Aray.
Thank you, Madam Interim Chairman and Commissioner. This matter was continued from the July twenty-eighth and August twenty-fifth settings, public hearing kept open, and continued from the September twenty-second setting, public hearing closed in order to permit the applicant to conduct various outreach efforts and to allow the licensing investigator to confirm protest numbers with respect to, before I get into the contents of the supplemental investigative report, I'll state that a summary of the June two preliminary hearing testimony was provided to interim chairmen and Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearings. And I will also state for the record that the video transcript, transcript of the September twenty-two continued public hearing was made available to Commissioner Hollinger with the following approximate testimony timestamp information. So we've provided timestamp information for a testimony coming from authorized representative Greg Nishioka and protests from Michael Korzenko, Roland Nips, Denise Bouver, Pamela Walker, Kim Jorgensen or Jorgensen, and Salvatore Anello with timestamps where they appear in, in that video transcript. With respect to this matter, through Thursday, September twenty-two, twenty-two, which is when the public hearing is closed, protest signature received totaled two hundred nineteen parcels within five hundred feet of the premises, one thousand seven hundred eighty-one registered voters within five hundred feet of the premises, nine hundred thirteen ownerlesses of parcels within five hundred feet of the premises with valid protests, oh, eighty or four point five percent. Registered voters within five hundred feet of the premises with valid protests, thirty-eight or four point one six percent. The registered voter count was obtained from a voter registration list dated November eighth, twenty twenty-one. In addition, this application has received signatures and support of sixteen. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you, Ms. Aray. Mr. Nishioka, do you have any response to the protest?
Other than what has already been placed on the record, but based upon last week's hearing, just want to let the commission know. We took your comments into heart. We'll try to designate a smoking area on Coohio Avenue with proper trash receptacles. We'll also put out, try to figure out where public parking is available for those who wish to, you know, come into Waikiki from outside, outside the area. We'll also put up a warning that there's no, to be no parking in the condos in the neighboring area, which, and they will be subject to toll if reduced.
Thank you.
Just want to address those concerns.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any comments or any questions for the applicant?
One real quick. When I was in here for a week's meeting, but I was able to look through some of the items. A question I have is, you know, the last time when you were, folks were here, you were still talking about building out. So are you still in the process of construction? Have you started construction?
We have not started construction yet. Our problem is manpower.
Yeah.
They can't find employees. I mean, Raymond's gonna.
Space right now inside. We're actually getting ready to install or to, to construction, but before this is approved or not approved, then we gotta find manpower. So this is the process that we're in right now. So once it's good, then we'll find some guys and we'll start.
Before I ask for a motion on this agenda, I just want to make a few comments. I am part native Hawaiian. My dad, Waikiki native Hawaiian from, grew up in Kaimuki and then in Manoa Valley. The house he grew, the house he lived in in Kaimuki is now Seven-Eleven on Second Avenue in Waiala. In Manoa, he got his Boy Scout American badge in swimming in a pond, natural pond stream that is now a gas station and a McDonald's in Manoa Marketplace. When he was a young boy, they used to always go out to Waikiki, go swim, go surf. One day, he and his cousin were down there. So shortly after, one of the major hotels was built on Kalakaua Avenue, fronting Waikiki Beach. And they were told by a hotel manager that they needed to leave because, quote, this is a holy beach now. So they, so they left. My uncle was one of the founders of the Beach Boys Union down in Waikiki. I tell you this to illustrate two things. One, my ties to Waikiki and the surrounding areas run deep. Two, Waikiki and Honolulu have changed a lot in the last seventy years, in the last forty years, and in the last twenty years, and it will continue to change. It is a commercial zoned area. We're coming out of a pandemic economic slump. This administration has made it clear to me that economic recovery is a priority to them. We've had around fifty licensees go out of business in the last two years, most of which will never return. So that is my reasoning for today is that we need to look at economic recovery. Waikiki is now a major commercial driver for not just our city, but our entire state. With that being said, commissioners, can I get a type of action, please?
I'd like to just make one comment before any motion is made. You've represented on several occasions in these hearings that you want to be a neighborhood community restaurant. And while that's admirable, there is significant protest, so I hope you take that to account in being a good tenant and a good neighbor there, because I did walk through this neighborhood on several occasions. I did try to understand what it's like to be there and to live there. And in my experience, it is a bit quieter. It's still Waikiki, of course, but it is still a bit quieter. And I can understand why so many people have had protests. At the same time, you have represented that this is going to be more of a restaurant, less of a bar. It's going to have limited hours. It's going to be primarily inside. There's no licensed area outside. Statute control noise and echoing parts of what Chairwoman Min just mentioned. We are coming out of a pandemic and we're hoping that commerce comes back strong. So I just hope that those protests were heard and that you'll do whatever you can to respect all of the residents in that area.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, I wanted to just make a comment of please work with the people, you know, you have the area there, right? Because as you did say, you want to make a restaurant a place for people to go, okay? So my motion is going to be to approve application number two-two-dash-two-four-one-nine-seven with the following restrictions. The closing time will be ten P. M. Next thing I'm going to say is we're going, I'm going to say there's a six-month probationary period from the date you open, because you're going to have to put all your stuff together. What I want to see is, you know, make sure you work with the community out there, right? Because those are the things that are there. Those are my, that's my motion.
Second.
And move then second it to approve application number two-two-dash-two-four-one-nine-seven with the conditions of a ten P. M. closure and a six-month probationary period from the time the license is picked up. Any objections or reservations? I mean, none. I also vote I. Application is approved with restrictions. Thank you, Mr. Nishioka. Good afternoon, Mr. Zhang. Calling agenda item number three, application number two-two-dash-two-four-six-two-zero from Seven-Eleven Hawaii. DBA Seven-Eleven Stores. Mr. Yokotake.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Eric Kawatani, attorney for applicant Seven-Eleven. Away to my right is the representative for the applicant, Blake Yokotake.
Do folks have any changes to the investigative report?
No, no changes.
That's all right.
Thank you, Madam Interim Chairman and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support, applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the August fourth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for the applicant?
What then would be to approve application number two-two-dash-two-four-six-two-zero.
Second.
Then move then second it to approve application number two-two-dash-two-four-six-two-zero. Any objections or reservations? Hearing done, I also vote I. Motion is carried. Application is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving into special license applications, calling agenda item number four, application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-six-three-two from Hawaii Egg and Culture Alliance, DBA Hawaii Food and Wine Festival. Oh, I'm happy this is back.
Good morning, Chair. Commissioners, my name is Cassia Oppo, and I'm actually joined by our CEO Denise Yamaguchi, who will speak on behalf of the organization, and I can help answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Aloha, Ms. Yamaguchi.
Aloha.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I'm reading through this. This is just for the individual, the fundraising portion of the online auction, right?
That is correct. Um, I also wanted to clarify that I think we will need to extend that November seventh date because the auction actually runs through November seventh, but I, I understand that there might be, we might need to have the application actually go through the pickup period, and I wanted some clarification on that.
Extend beyond the November seventh date for what purpose? I'm sorry, to add an additional day or?
No, it was for a pickup period, so the auction actually runs online through the seventh. But after that period, we have a pickup period, right? The auction will end, people will finish placing their bids. When the auction closes, we will need people to pick up the items, so we, we might need a few more weeks to add on to the application for that, but I would just want a clarification for that.
If you would just confirm that at the time when the auction closes, that all of the monetary transaction has been completed to the sale, in other words, the sale, purchase sales has been completed, that the only thing is like a will call pickup that would be permitted, but you would have to, in terms of the actual money transaction, has to be completed within the dates of your nonprofit special license.
Okay, so that is, that's correct, then. The transactions will all be completed by the seventh.
Thank you. So I don't think that you need to extend, okay?
Thank you.
As long as everything is going to be. As long as everything is going to be closed, the auction will be closed online by the 7th. Then you folks are okay with the pickup time.
If you require additional time, you can ask to come back and amend the application to add additional days if you run into some problems with absolutely closing down the monetary transaction on the 7th.
Okay, thank you.
Question? Any more questions or type of action?
My motion would be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, six, three, two.
Then second it to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, six, three, two. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Here, if I could interject it this before you call the first preliminary hearing to make an announcement with respect to proposed agenda scheduling?
Yes, of course.
Okay, at this point, and this is in order to preserve or maintain form, the following agenda item matters will be taken up later on on the docket. So I'm going to name them by number and by the applicant name. Agenda items numbers seven and 10 for Ko'olau Spirits LLC. Agenda item number eight, Full Circle Sellers LLC. Agenda item number 13, Ripple of Smiles. And agenda item number 16, La Kukaracha, now known as Leaaki Bar and Grill, will be taken up later on in the agenda because we want to be able to maintain form and conduct those business items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Right, calling agenda item number five, transfer application number two, two dash two, three, nine, six, eight from Hotel Renew Management LLC. Mr. Lee.
Afternoon, Men and Chair Commissioners, Terry Lee, Counselor for the applicant. To my right is Jeff Dinsmore, J E F F, D I N S M O R. He is the manager of the applicant entity. I've reviewed the investigative report and I'm, I'm prepared to comment on it as the commission may have questions. But all I would say is, you know, these issues that have been raised by investigator are fairly typical for this type of situation. So I don't want to spend excess time since commissioners are, I assume, already familiar with.
Can you understand, Mr. Lee, that if there is found to have been a violation, then that will be taken up at a later adjudication hearing, correct?
Yes.
So we're, we're not going to be taking up those issues at this time unless Commissioner Buckley or Hollinger have any questions?
Should be to approve, um, application, transfer application number two, two dash two, three, nine, all right, two, three, nine, six, eight.
Then move then second it to approve transfer application number two, two dash two, three, nine, six, eight. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number six, application number two, two dash two, four, four, zero, five from Any Place Cocktail Lounge. Ms. Melcher.
There, Commissioner, this is Robin Melch on behalf of the applicant, Any Place Inc. And to my right is Judy Long, the President of the applicant. We have reviewed the report and just want to note that she has completed the fingerprinting earlier this month. And other than that, there are no additional changes or corrections.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for the applicant?
My motion would be to approve application number two, two dash two, four, four, zero, five.
Second.
Then move then second it to approve application number two, two dash two, four, four, zero, five. Any objections or reservations? I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to.
Nine.
Yeah, calling agenda item number nine, application number two, two dash two, five, zero, seven, nine from Nana Ikatso.
Good, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners and Commission staff. This is Ryan K. Hugh on behalf of the applicant. Appearing is my client, to me is Leanne Jones, sole member of the LLC. We've received the investigator's report. I only have just a quick question, if I may.
Um, I don't know if we'll be able to answer that.
Super, we have fingerprints as pending, but I believe she has submitted it earlier this summer. So I'm just double checking on that, just so, just point of clarification.
Yeah, you will double check actually with the licensee.
Okay, cool. So that, that, that's about it.
Okay. Commissioners, you have any questions or type of action?
To approve application number two, two dash two, five, zero, seven, nine.
Second.
Then move then second it to approve application number two, two dash two, five, zero, seven, nine. Any objections and reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Moving on to request, calling agenda item number 11, request number two, three dash zero, zero, five, eight, nine from Benchmark Hospitality of Hawaii LLC, DBA Turtle Bay Resort.
Good afternoon, Chairmembers of the Commission. Mr. Ryan Robert Williams on behalf of the Turtle Bay Resort, also President, Mr. Joey Wooster. He is the resort manager, spelling it on there. At this moment, I'm going to amend the request. It does, the request does say for beer, wine, and distilled spirits. We'd like to amend it to only beer and wine. We want to develop our process further for distilled spirits. And we plan to bring that forward on a later date. So at this time today, it's only beer and wine. This is a controlled environment and they have, it's a club access room. I'm going to have an access card in the front. We're going to have a club host in the, at the front entrance. We're also going to have a manager at the beverage counter monitoring to make sure everything is done properly. This is an exclusive room with only about eight percent of the total guests. It's only 40 rooms of the total, 450 rooms, so it's really limited to amount of people. Our hours are actually, it does say eight o'clock, but it's actually going to be till 7:30. So we're really trying to limit this. It is an exclusive area and it is, it will be closely monitored.
Before we continue, I will make that disclosure.
Yes.
That IOW does represent the employee, the Turtle Bay Golf. I am their current representative, and this will not affect my ability to be impartial in deciding on this matter.
You do not represent the employees of the hotel itself, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Okay, and this is, as, as you say, Mr. Wioko, this is a exclusive members only club lounge, correct? In one of the suites of the hotel?
That's correct, yes.
And this is going to be self-service though, right?
Yes.
Okay, but you do have, you do have employees monitoring at all times when there are, when there are guests inside of the area.
Yes, an employee directly near the beverage counter will have.
And I believe there's, it looks on your floor plan that there is a host as well and a host area to prevent them taking any of the alcohol out of the space.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, type of action, please?
My motion would be to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, five, eight, nine.
Second.
Then move then second it to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, five, eight, nine. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, request is granted. Thank you, Mr. Wioko. So we'll start.
Madam Interim Chair, during this slight lull, do you wish us to confirm if Commissioner Miyashiro is online? It is five o'clock.
Yes, can we see Doug if Dwayne is online? No, okay, thank you.
All right, I guess we'll chug on.
Okay, so we'll, um, we can move on to agenda item number 12 then, correct?
Yes.
All right, calling agenda item number 12, request number two, three dash zero, zero, six, two, five from Mr. Kenneth Morris on behalf of Hale Momo LLC. Mr. Morris.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Morris, Madam Commissioner, or Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm here to request a waiver of the five day period within which a temporary license needs to be applied for and transferred. The space that we're looking to move into during the pandemic, the previous business went, went out of business. And because of that, no one's really been in that space since then. And we're hoping to get a waiver to apply for a temporary license. Also a full license from the space, same as was existing.
A former site of Islander Saki Brewery, correct? So you folks are going to be using both units, ANC?
Six, two, five.
Second.
Then move then second it to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, six, two, five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, request is granted. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
We get a type of action for agenda items 14.
Like 14, 15, 17 to 19, because we do have to have that skipped in the middle.
Got it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioners, you know what to do.
Motion would be for adoption of decision and order for items number, and items 14, 15, 17, 18, and 19.
Then move then second it for the adoption of decision and order. For those agenda items stated in Commissioner Hollinger's motion, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, those items are adopted. Yep, moving on into adjudication hearing. Calling agenda item number 20, Bar Maze. I'm sorry, Mr. Jacob, go ahead.
Good evening, Interim Chair and Commissioners. Daniel Jacob, Deputy Preparation Counsel on behalf of the City and County of Honolulu.
Good afternoon, now, members of the Commission, Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Bar Maze. Appearing with me is Justin Park, a member. We waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept plea.
Second.
Then move then second it to accept the no contest fee for agenda item 20. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the no contest fee is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, could you please give your recommendation?
This violation occurred on November 13th, 2021, where the licensee employed an individual in an area where liquor is sold without that individual being properly registered with the commission. It's a first time violation, recommend a fine of $350.
Mr. Gohta.
Sure, this is an inadvertent mistake on behalf of licensee. The employee had taken and passed its server training class, but there was miscommunication and the actual liquor card was not picked up immediately after being informed of this. The issue was rectified and they have not had any problems since.
Mr. Jacobs, can you confirm this is the first violation?
Yeah, it is the first violation.
My motion will be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number 20.
Second.
Then move then second it to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item 20. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you, Mr. Gota.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number 21, Chicken and Brisket.
Hello?
Please say your name for the record.
My name is Matthew Tomita, representing Chicken and Brisket as a owner partner.
Jacob, could you please read the charge?
Honor, about February 12th, 2022, in the City and County of Honolulu, data of white licensee committed liquor of any kind while in bottle, glass, or other container to be openly, open and readily consumable within the license premises before or after the hour is established by the Liquor Commission to 2:33 AM and violation of Rule 3 dash 82 dash 38.20 Sub D of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Thank you. Sir, Tomita, how would you like to plead in this matter?
I was just going to plead a no contest.
Okay, thank you. Motion to accept plea.
Second.
Then move then second it to accept the no contest fee for agenda item 21. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
Again, this violation occurred at 2:33 AM. This is a first time violation for the licensee. So the base is $500 and we had $10 per minute for a grand total of $830 for a recommended fine on this case.
Mr. Tomita, do you have any comments in this matter?
No, I do not.
Motion to accept the recommended fine for agenda item number 21.
Then move then second it to approve the recommended fine, I'm sorry, $830?
Yes.
$830 for agenda item 21. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, $830 fine is approved. Thank you, Mr. Tomita.
Okay, thank you.
Calling agenda item 22, Club Secret.
Interim Chair, I'm aware that the commission received a request from Arnold Green, who's representing the licensee. He's requested a continuance to an unspecified date because he failed to specify a date. I have no objection to continuing this matter to the next available.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Commissioners.
I'll move to continue this matter to the next available calendar date.
Second.
Then move then second it to continue agenda item 22 to the next available date. Any objections or reservations? I also vote I, motion is carried. Calling agenda item 23, Club Secret.
Again, Interim Chair, Arnold Green has requested a continuance, no objections to the next available.
Commissioners.
Motion to continue agenda item number 23 to the next available calendar date.
Second.
Then move then second it to continue agenda item 23 to the next available date. Any reservations or objections? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, item is continued. Calling agenda item number 24. Goodnum, now known as Millian. Oh, I know Millian.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners, Robin Melch on behalf of the current tenant, Rainbow State Investments Inc. We waive public reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest with explanation. And with me is Charlene, you are the President of the current tenant.
Thank you. Motion to accept plea.
Second.
Then move then second it to accept the no contest fee for agenda item 24. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
This violation was discovered on March 4th, 2022, when investigators found that alterations were made to the license premises without permission prior approval. Specifically, the licensee added a kitchen door and reconfigured bathrooms. This is the first violation for the licensee, recommended fine is $500.
It's not.
Yeah, as I stated, the current tenant took over the premises after the previous tenant, who done Hawaii, vacated the premises. And my client, she did not prepare, did any alterations. In fact, we submitted a request for alterations in February 15, 2022, which was approved on actually March 4th, 2022. My client is aware that, you know, no alterations can be permitted unless it has been approved by the commission, which it has been approved. Any alterations, if there were many, was done by the previous tenant. You know, and as I stated, that she's aware that, she knows that she cannot make any alterations unless we get approval. We did submit a request for approval. So we're requesting that a letter of reprimand be issued because as I stated, she did not prepare, did any alterations when she took over the premises, when the tenant left. And we don't know what happened prior to that. And again, we request a letter of reprimand.
And as of today, are the floor plans accurate as to what is actually in the space?
Yeah.
Okay, so our records match up now with what is, what is true and accurate in the space. Commissioners.
I think this is implied, but the additions that are noted in the charge were those in your request for revisions?
Yeah.
Motion, I'll make a motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number 24.
Second.
Then move then second it to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item 24. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you, Ms. Melcher.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Then agenda item number 25, Blue Green Tea. Mr. Kuchi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kuchi for the licensee. We're going to deny the charges as this set, be set for a contested judge.
Motion to accept plea.
Second.
Yeah, I think you just continued, continued for setting for a contested case hearing.
Mr. Kuchi, we have certain rules that govern the process.
Yeah, you don't, you don't need, it's been, no, I appreciate it. And, and just so you know, like clockwork, Doug always emails me saying you have anything to download.
We are very lucky to have Doug. All right, so motion to continue to next available for contested hearing, please.
Second.
Then move then second it to continue agenda item 25 to the next available hearing date for a contested hearing. I also vote I, motion is carried, and we'll see next time. Calling agenda item 26, New Green Tea, Mr. Kuchi again, please.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members. Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kuchi for the licensee. We're also gonna deny this charge at like it put on the same date as the contested hearing, because this is not gonna be contested. What Mr. Jacob and I are trying to figure out is how many machines were approved. And this is like a black and white, so it's not gonna be contested. We know how many machines she had. The question is how many were approved, so.
You know, I'm gonna ask.
Right, yeah. Well, she had, she had a lot of.
Okay. All right, so you just wanna continue.
Oh, I continue, and then we'd like, I'll work with administration and Mr. Jacob. We said it on the same day, it kind of makes sense. We're not gonna have two adjudication hearings, that's not what's gonna happen.
Right, Commissioner.
Motion to continue agenda item number twenty-six to a calendar dates consistent with agenda item number twenty-five.
Second.
Then move then second to continue to the next available date. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, item is continued. Thank you, Mr. Kuchi.
I got twenty-seven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, Pandora Cafe and Karaoke Bar and Grill.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kuchi for the licensee. We'd like to continue this to October twenty-seventh. My client is off island, and that date would work.
Objection. Mr. Wright, does that date work?
Yes, I will not be here, but there is a meeting scheduled for that day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to continue agenda item number twenty-seven to October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Then move then second to continue agenda item twenty-seven to October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, item is continued. Thank you. See, do we have Commissioner Amiashiro online yet? Oh, okay. Calling agenda, agenda item twenty-eight, Panya.
Hi.
Online appearing for Panya.
I'm here.
Hi, please, hello, hello ma'am, please introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Annie Young, I'm the manager and co-owner of Panya Bistro.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs, could you please read the charge?
Honor about March second, twenty twenty-two, in the City and County of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensees employed and all whose conduct licensee is strictly accountable pursuant to rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point oh one sub A. Consume liquor while on duty on the license premises in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero one sub B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Okay, Ms. Young, how would you like to plead as to this charge?
I'm guilty.
Motion to accept plea.
Second.
Then move then second to accept the plea for agenda item twenty-eight. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
This is licensee's first violation, recommended fines five hundred dollars.
Ms. Young, would you like anything to add?
Um, yes, and also for the correction action from the management. We have revealed and have an updating memo for all the servers and the bartender to remind, to be reminded that they should not be having certain conduct during work. Just to comply to the law and regulations, thank you.
Thank you for that. Motion to accept the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty-eight.
Second.
Then move then second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-eight. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, the recommended fine is approved. Thank you, Ms. Young, and thank you for taking responsibility.
Sure, thank you.
Calling agenda item twenty-nine, Pro Country Club. Oh, I'm sorry, can you wait a few minutes, Mr. Uyoka? Okay, I'm sorry, we, we see that Commissioner Amiashiro is online, so at this time.
All seven and ten.
Well, I know that Commissioner Amiashiro had said that he would only like to appear for the discussion on the ad for the new administrator. Commissioner Amiashiro, are you here to speak for yourself? No video and no audio.
Yeah.
Dwayne, are you there? Get him. All right.
Your adjudications and see if he can come online?
If he is online, he's just not responding. Wanna make sure that we can hear him in order to have quarrels. Why don't we just move on with the adjudication for now? And if and when he's ready to make his appearance, can let us know, Doug, or Dwayne, you can just jump on. Calling agenda item twenty-nine, Pro Country Club, Mr. Uyoka, thank you for agreeing.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission, Mr. Wright, Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Pro Country Club, also present via Zoom is Mr. Ed Kagiyama, he is the general manager. It seemed like the wave reading of the charge under a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept plea.
I'm gonna make a quick disclosure before I can make the motion.
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, I'll make a disclosure that the ILWU does represent the employees at Pro Country Club Golf Course, as well as the restaurant itself. I am not the employee's direct representatives, and this will not affect my ability to be impartially deciding on this matter.
And there's a motion on the floor.
I will second the motion.
Move then second to accept the no contest fee for agenda item twenty-nine. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the no contest fee is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on November seventh, twenty twenty-two, when the licensee permitted entertainment that, I'm sorry, January seventh, twenty-two, when the licensee permitted entertainment that investigators determined disrupted the peace and quiet. This is licensee's first violation, recommended fine is five hundred dollars. The licensee did receive two prior warnings on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Uyoka.
This occurred at, like Mr. Jacob said, it was on January seventh, twenty twenty-two, it was a Friday night at nine oh four PM. It was a complaint by a person across the street, a homeowner across Illinois street. And we, we had a wedding with the clubhouse ballroom. And we immediately, of course, turned on the, turned on the music soon as we found out there was a complaint. Just wanted to mention that the claimant is about four hundred to five hundred feet away across the street of Illinois, which is, of course, a very, a very loud road. This complaint in particular has made multiple complaints about our golf course lawn mower equipment. So it's, it's something that we really want, really wanna address and avoid any future complaints. We are doing that by lowering the volume of course, monitoring decibel levels, and definitely keeping the, the music down after nine o'clock. We're really trying to do our best to be a good neighbor.
That representation, Mr. Uyoka. Commissioners.
Mr. Uyoka, do you know what the decibel level was at the time of the complaint?
Yeah, and this one, I don't believe the decibel level was taken, it wasn't in the investigator's report, so I didn't, we actually had a video of it, and it really didn't seem that loud. But like I said, I, this complaining is, is very sensitive, and fortunately, we, we have to do our best given the circumstances.
It's been asked already, but the, the noise, what was the, the noise from? Was it live entertainment, was it recorded music?
It was a, it was a disc jockey.
The two prior warnings, do we know what those were in reference to?
Unfortunately, I do not.
To accept the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty-nine.
Second.
Then move then seconded to accept, to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-nine. Any objections or reservations? I will vote with, I, I with reservations, motion is carried, the fine is approved. Thank you, Mr. Uyoka.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Calling agenda item thirty, Shinsho Kei. Oh, Dwayne is on? Okay, I'm seeing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am, hold on one second, I'm seeing that Dwayne is online.
Can you folks hear me?
Hi, Dwayne, yes, we can, thank you for appearing.
Great, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your patience with me. I'm gonna mute until I am asked to speak.
Well, we wanted to know, would you have time to take up the agenda items that Commissioner Buckley needs to recuse from? Or are you appearing solely for the discussion on the administrator ad?
If I may, if it's acceptable to you, Chair, can we take up the administrator item? And then I will stand by and be available for the remaining items.
Thank you, yes, we will do that. All right. Got the item thirty-four out of order. Liquor Commission review, discussion, and action on proposed administrator advertisement. The Liquor Commission has reviewed the proposed job posting advertisements for the vacant liquor commission administrator position. And at this time, the commission will discuss, amend, and take action on a final advertisement. The commission may also discuss the hiring timeline to fill the vacant position. Commissioners, any discussion on this, on this matter? Okay, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, Tammy. Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Tammy Uyoka, on behalf of administration, I just wanted to. As we've been seated in the public board talkroom. Since then, we've had two additional, or three additional changes that came through yesterday. One was to request the removal of the driver license requirement. Look at your second copy, you can see the reduction. The second change was to add a salary range. The third change was to submit an application deadline of October twenty-second instead of the very first.
Thank you, Tammy. All right. Question? I, I would like to bring up that. I think we should, we should include a valid driver's license. Just because the administrator may be required to conduct investigations or to. Make visits at licensed premises and also to appear at city council hearings with Judge Kapole, a lot of times. If possible, if it's not a. There is no legal limitation in including it, I would like to include the requirement of a driver's license. What do you, how do you folks feel about that?
Do we know why that was recommended to be removed?
Recommendation came from Corporation Council. There is a move, it's for the past few years now, where every job that driving is required must be justified. And so if you would like that requirement in there, we would need to submit a report to Human Resources to ask them that this position be required to have the driver's license in.
Perhaps Corporation Council can assist with this, since this was your folks' recommendation?
Recommendation from a neighbor section? I think that, I think that.
What kind of reasoning would be acceptable to include this? I mean, I said, I think it is important for them to be able to. To bases, you know, without restriction, you know, and some of our licensees' hours are past the time when the bus is run. You know, also difficult to get a Uber or Lyft at midnight. So I'm, I don't know, I'm inclined to include it, but if it, if it is too much of an issue to have it included, I guess, I can't identify.
I have a comment, this is Dwayne Niashiro.
Hi, Dwayne.
Hi, I agree with the chair's. Her, her. Thinking in terms of the utility of having a driver's license requirement for the administrator. And I will add also that there may be times that the administrator needs to testify or appear before boards that are outside of town. For example, perhaps there's a hearing at the Kapole City Hall that requires transportation, and we don't wanna put a undue burden on. An applicant who may not have a driver's license to get out there for that testimony, just as an example. And other than that, I also would suggest that we do advertise in the Neighbor Island papers in addition to the under the little star advertising. Those are my comments.
That reiterates both Commissioner Amiashiro. Sure, means points of valid Hawaii driver license, I believe is something we need. I mean, in my opinion, they may need to get to places, and I just think it's a wise thing for someone that's going to be in charge of a bunch of people. I don't know what we would need to do to recommend that.
Yes, I make a recommendation, instead of putting it under the minimum qualifications where it then becomes required. You could put the same verbiage under preferred experience. Sure, the administrator knows he may, he or she may have to drive to places, but that doesn't mean they themselves have to be the ones driving. I think that was Corporation Council's concern.
This may also stem from, you know, equal opportunity employment, that, that the requirement could cause a limitation on someone with a disability, which I understand is. Is contrary to law. But I, I think perhaps putting it in the preferred, preferred qualifications would be a good remedy, so that they know that we do want them to be able to drive. How do you feel about that, commissioners? As a compromise?
I find that acceptable.
Why don't we do that then? It's, um, move the, have it be a preference, not a qualification. And move it to the end portion. What was your other concern? Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, a broader reach, I guess, to Neighbor Islands. Because the requirement is, there is a residency requirement, so we do wanna put this out to our Neighbor Island professionals in case they would like to apply. If, if possible, if possible.
Okay, so we just need direction that you would like it to appear in the Maui news, the Garden Island, the Hawaii Tribune Herald.
Yes, and do we have anything on Kauai?
That is the Garden Island.
Garden Island, okay. Yes, please, I, that is our, that is our request, commissioners, our direction.
Yeah, I agree with that.
To publish in Neighbor Islands, please. All right, do we have any other discussion on the ad? I believe that we're gonna be discussing the hiring timeline, correct? So this is gonna be posted until the deadline to apply is gonna be October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Eleven fifty-nine PM, and then after which we will be. Applications will be sent to HRD, correct? And they are then going to do the first pass of the applications to deter, to determine whether an applicant has met the minimum requirements. If they have met the minimum requirements, then they will move on to the next phase, which is the interview phase. And the commissioners will be conducting those interviews. We are still discussing the procedure and process. We are still discussing the procedure and process and how we would like to conduct those. And when we have solidified that process, we will be announcing it to the public. But we are looking at. A timeline of. Early November to make a, to make an offer to somebody. Is that what we have?
No, you're waiting for your fifth Commissioner to be seated, then you will conduct interviews, right?
And I know that, that, that fifth Commissioner is already in the process of being confirmed. By the mayor, so we should have him on board shortly. We have any other discussion on this matter before I close it? Mr. Ryan, you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. If there's anybody here in the galley or online that would like to testify on this agenda item, please make yourself known. Seeing as we have no one wanting to testify, we're gonna close this matter and move on to the, to the next agenda item. Yes.
Advertisements as amended.
Okay. Hi, Commissioners, can I get a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to go with the. Draft as amended, adding the driver's license in the preferred experience section. As well as that we would want it to be published or put out on all of the islands. I need to name them because I know the one.
Then moved and seconded to approve the. To approve the ad for the administrator as amended. And any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also hold eye motion as carried. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Commissioner Miaschero, are you able to stay online for? Agenda items seven, eight, ten, thirteen, and sixteen?
Yes, I'm here and I can participate in those matters.
Thank you. All right, so we'll call, we'll recall those agenda items.
And Madam Chair, I will make the disclosure that due to potential conflict of interest, I must recuse myself from agenda item numbers seven, eight, and thirteen and sixteen.
Thank you, Commissioner Buckley. We have agenda item number seven. The application number two-two dash two-four-four four, two-four-four four-six from Ko'olau Spirits LLC DBA. Old Polly Road Whiskey and Old Polly Road Whiskey.
Good evening to the Chair Commissioners. This is Adam N. Miller, appearing on behalf of the applicant Ko'olau Spirits LLC. Appearing alongside me is its Chief Executive Officer Eric Dill.
Well, my motion will be to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four four-six.
Second the motion.
We moved and seconded to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four four-six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also hold eye motion as carried. Application is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Could you stay on line please for number ten? Calling agenda item number ten. Request number two-two dash two-four-four eight-zero from Ko'olau Spirits LLC DBA Ko'olau Distillery.
Good evening, Adam and Miller, appearing on behalf of the applicant, appearing alongside me is Eric Till, the applicant's CEO. We would request that this item be postponed or continued to the time of agenda item number seven's public hearing. As the, we've requested they be considered concurrently.
If I could, if I could just interject here.
Sure.
The commission, I think my understanding is the request is intended to be effective or delayed effectiveness to when the, the public on the other matter is that, I believe, I mean, you're, you're certainly entitled. Whatever your council has advised you to do, I believe the commission can take action on it, it just that it would not become effective until the time within which the other license is ready. But if the council has advised you to go ahead and withdraw or continue, I'm, I'm, it's far be it for me to interject myself into that advice. I'm just saying.
If it's the case, the commission can take action with the effective date of the premises reduction being, you know, pending approval of.
I'm sorry, we have some confusion here. Yes, of course. Each two.
It's really up to you guys. I'm sorry if I interrupted, but I just thought it.
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry, let me read from the licensing investigative report. And it says, the effective date of this permanent reduction of premises will take place when the small craft producer pub license has passed final inspection and has been issued a license. Should it be approved by the commission? So I don't think you folks need to continue. I think we can take action on this and then it will take effect when you're, when, when your other, when your license is approved. Is that okay?
Yes, remenable to that. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
We don't need to read into the record.
No, no. So the effective date is when the other one will be approved.
All right. So my motion will be to approve request number two-two dash two-four-four eight-zero.
I second the motion.
And move then seconded to approve request number two-two dash two-four-four eight-zero. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold eye motion as carried. Request is granted. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're calling agenda item number eight. Application number two-two dash two-four-five-zero-one from Full Circle Cellars LLC. Hi there. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself.
All right, listeners, Mr. Sato Pablo Scaro for Full Circle Sellers.
Thank you. And online, I see we have another, someone else appearing?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Zachary Diano, authorized agent for the applicant Full Circle Sellers LLC. We did review the investigative report and we're prepared to answer questions of the commission.
Questions and type of action, Commissioners?
Seeing no questions, my motion will be to approve application number two-two dash two-four-five-zero-one.
Second the motion.
And move then seconded to approve application number two-two dash two-four-five-zero-one. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold eye motion as carried. Application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It will be for acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in order for agenda item number thirteen.
Second.
Then seconded to approve the adoption of decision in order for agenda item thirteen. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold eye motion as carried.
Then my next one. Adoption of decision in order.
Second.
Then seconded for the adoption of decision in order for agenda item sixteen. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold eye motion as carried. All right. I think we are all with that first Commissioner. Miaschero. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Can we get Commissioner Buckley back, please? And thank you for your patience. I'm going back on the adjudication schedule, calling agenda item thirty in Chilpe.
And spell it. Helen Galmici, G A L M I C H E.
I'm sorry, could you spell that one more time? Miss, I'm sorry, could you spell that one more time?
G A L M I C H E. Sorry, this is my own guess.
Mr. Jacobs, could you please read the charge?
Honor about March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two, and the city and county of Honolulu says, why licensee failed to immediately prevent or suppress any violent, quarrelsome, disorderly, lewd, immoral, or unlawful conduct of any person on the licensed premises to wit failing to take immediate action to prevent customers from impeding investigators in their inspections in violation of section two-eight-one dash seventy-eight, sub B, sub six of Hawaii Revise Statutes.
Ms. Galmici, how would you like to plead in this matter?
I'm not guilty.
As you've pleaded not guilty, we'll have to continue this matter and set it for hearing on a future date.
Am I like going at the end of the line or are you continuing to another day?
We, we aren't prepared to have a contested case hearing today. So if you are going to deny the charge, we'll have to reschedule you to a future date so that our, the prosecutor can prepare their case. And then we'll have an adjudication hearing in which you'll be able to state your case, call witnesses, bring in evidence. And the prosecution will do the same. And then that, that, so it's almost like a quasi judicial proceeding.
They sent me some papers saying that if I was gonna have any witnesses or, then I would, I would have brought them today.
No, that, that would be taken care of at a, at a adjudication hearing if you wish to deny a charge. You may also plead no contest and then we can take care of it today. It's up to you.
No, I'm not guilty.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, Miss Commissioner Buckley will continue to read you the instructions then, okay? And then we'll reschedule.
Say that I've waited six months to get served.
You understand.
And they didn't even serve me. They served my accountant who only does my taxes.
They serve it to whatever address we have on record for your business.
Yeah, it should be mine.
Well, then you can correct that with the commission staff during regular business.
I had a dream today that I was late for this hearing. And I ran the last five minutes to get here.
I'm sorry, and you've been waiting a while. I understand, you know, and that sometimes the wheels of government can move slowly and we appreciate your patience on the matter. But if you do want to deny the charge, then we do need to reschedule you for a later date. You can, Commissioner Buckley has some more instructions to read to you up to the record.
We have some instructions and they will also be sent to you as well. So you'll have a written copy of these instructions. So first, seven days before the contested hearing, both the prosecution and the licensee must disclose to each other their proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may not be considered at the contested case hearing. Second, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Third, each party's exhibits must be uploaded to the Liquor Commission's Google Drive by four P M on Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished will be provided to the parties and will be available on the Liquor Commission's website. If you have physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both the Liquor Commission and the other party know. And as a reminder to each party, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birth dates, or bank account numbers must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains that information. Do you understand?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, this will be sent to you as well.
Thank you.
All right, this, this matter will be continued. To the next available date for contested hearing. Thank you. And you'll be notified.
Okay, thank you.
If you want, if you want to be notified at a different address, please come in and help you change the address on the record that we have. Because if it's going to your accountant. Then you need to come in and change it to make sure that you, you're getting the notices where you want them to go. Otherwise, we just send it to whatever we have on record. During regular business hours, you can talk to the office in the front and they can help you with that matter. I, I'm sure of the process, but you can ask them.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes. All right, calling agenda item thirty-one, Siam Paradise Restaurant and Sports Pub.
I'll represent to the Chair that I did try to reach the licensee. I was unable to find any contact in regards to them. We, records do show that they were served on September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, a notice of this hearing. I'd ask that the commission enter default.
Before I do that, can we make a call, please, Cat? If anyone is gonna appear for thirty-one? Do we have anyone online that would like, that is appearing for agenda item thirty-one, Siam Paradise Restaurant and Sports Pub? Seeing no response, Commissioners, will entertain a default judgment in this matter?
Just to come in before we have any motions, in the past, we've entered defaults as to the plea, but continue the matter as to. fines to a next available calendar date. Is that something that the commission would like to entertain or would like to entertain just straight default with?
I think because we have received no appearances, that we can move on a default for both the, with the judgment as well as, as well as the fine.
Mr. Jacobs, what are your recommended fines in this matter?
The violation occurred on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, where the licensee permitted disorderly persons to remain on the premise. That's charge one. Charge two is permitting liquor to be sold after hours prohibited. Charge one involves investigators finding two people sleeping at the bar when they arrived after hours. Upon waking them up, the investigators determined that the individuals were very intoxicated and were asked to leave. License, investigators did show up at licensee's premises at, after two A M, at two-ten A M, that they witnessed individuals having alcohol readily available to them. The first viola, the first charge is a first violation. The recommended fine is one thousand dollars. As to the second charge, permitting liquor to be sold after hours, it's a second violation. The recommended base is seven hundred and fifty dollars for the second violation, plus a hundred dollars extra for ten minutes per minute after two A M. So the grand total here would be eighteen, eighteen hundred and fifty dollars.
The motion to enter default for charge one and charge two in agenda item number thirty-one and to accept the recommended fines. Second.
Then move then seconded to enter default judgment for agenda item thirty-one for charges one and two in the amounts of one thousand dollars and eight hundred and fifty dollars respectively for a total of one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And I also, any, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote eye motion as carried. The default judgment will be entered. All right, calling agenda item thirty-two, Smith's Union Bar.
Good afternoon, again, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, key Q chief for the licensee, waive reading of the charge and her plea of no contest.
Motion to accept plea.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to accept the no contest, please, for agenda item thirty-two. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold eye. The plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, when investigators witnessed customers intermingling without masks and walking around, sorry, in incomplete contact tracing walk. This is licensee's third violation. The recommended fine is one thousand dollars. First violation occurred on March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, where the licensee paid six hundred and eighty dollars. Second violation occurred on May fifth, twenty-twenty-one, where the licensee paid seven hundred and fifty.
Mr. Q team.
So in this instance, unlike we had a hearing on the same licensee a couple of weeks ago, there were several people in the bar and it wasn't intermingling. If you've never seen the premises before, Smith Union Bar is very narrow. So you've got the bar area, you really don't have tables. You've got basically what amounts to like a ledge up opposite from the bar. This is Saturday night. There are a lot of people there. It wasn't intermingling. That's why this is a little bit different than the charge a couple of weeks ago. I talked at length with my client and he acknowledges it's a little bit different. I talked at length with my client and he acknowledges it's a little bit different.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number.
Then move then seconded to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item thirty two. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hope I motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe the only thing we have left is agenda item thirty three, liquor administrator, Ms. Harae.
I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.